One nation under God, indivisible, with a great and absolute throne.
All right, we're gonna start the meeting off tonight at six thirty for the public hearing for the team of blood plane orders. We discussed it in the prior meeting and set out a public hearing for tonight. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to discuss the important floodway? Is there anybody online that might discuss the witness? Oh, Mallory. Right, here he is, John. Yes, sir.
So at this point, I'd like to just bring the council, uh, compare this to the current the current ordinance we already have. Uh, well, essentially, this document, page three, talking, our current ordinance has residential and non-revital construction. It talks about flooding the air. And then what they added is they added, that was H and I, they added on page eight, they added a section for manufactured homes, A, a section for recreational vehicles, L, accessory structures, down floodways, can I draw openings and floods then, then all the bridges, people can paint the walls and queue for water, pairs and lots. That's what was added on that piece. Then the only other part is then because they added those sections, they had to increase the definition. So our definition page is gonna go from three pages to six pages, a little bit of basic changes when it's flooding. But it's really just federal documentation working.
Thank you, Tim. And hearing no comments on this, we will close the public hearing. We'll now will take roll call for the meeting. We have five counselors or four counselors present and one participating from Zoom. We are online tonight, so we will be doing the roll call, turn and vote. That being said, we will move along to Google of the minutes. First one up is the public hearing vehicle traffic ordinance. Have any corrections? Are you done? All are contained, both?
Uh, motion to approve the public hearing vehicle traffic ordinance one thirty dash eight and one thirty dash thirteen from six twenty five to twenty twenty four.
I have a roll call in a second. Well, I have the next. Here we go. Hello. Mallory?
I'll abstain because I have an absent.
Jessica?
Hi.
Yeah. Hi. Melissa?
Hi.
Well, I also will be passage four, but one at station. Now to the town council meeting in six. Have any corrections to, if you really saw, this is one.
I don't have a correction. I just have a question because there is something um, in the minutes that actually contributes something that is on the agenda for tonight. So under the section where it says Tamara also asked about the process was for the project. And at the end of the sentence, it says, um, the project preparation of renovated or rebuilt to which will be voted on by the citizens. But then there is an item later in the agenda where there is no notion that the citizens are able to vote. So I don't know. I don't know if it, I'm not sure if it even needs to be amended or.
I don't believe so. That was her question. I tried to answer it, but that's the good. I'm not sure if I did, but she's smiling at me, so I didn't. Uh, so they don't, I guess, was the conversation we had, so I don't think it's. First one. All right, that being said, I'll move to the town council meeting at two twenty fifth, twenty twenty four, is ready. Motion in a second. Here we go. On to votes. All right.
Same again.
Okay. Jessica?
Hi.
Melissa?
Hi.
Yeah, hi. Roll call. I also. Before amendment, one session. Moving along, we have the warrant. I'll make the motion to approve the warrant dated six twenty seven, twenty twenty four. Amount of four hundred ninety thousand, six hundred eighty one dollars and zero cents. I have a motion and a second, and before Tim settles it, can I remind everybody to use their microphones because nobody can hear you. Uh, any conversation on the warrant? Are you done? Vote or vote. Mallory?
Yes.
Jessica?
Hi.
Yeah. Hi, Melissa?
Hi.
Well, I'll, I also will be passes five zero. Um, before we get to public comment, I know this here is here. You can give us a quick update on that one.
Yeah, just so you, so who crossed lines was not the fault of the clerk. She did what I asked her to do. She didn't put him down on the agenda. I didn't think he was done anymore, but cross line, but um, we do have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, we've been postponed, so that's why we.
Well, thank you. I'm sorry to mess up the schedule and come in unannounced.
Oh, good.
I mean, we do have the unfinished business down there. Again, my name is Peter McGovern. I'm with Oak Point Associates Architect Firm, who's been on task to do the um, town hall project study. A little loud. Testing, the better. Testing, testing.
I can hear you great, Peter. You sound great.
Thank you.
Yep.
So um, so last time we were here, you voted to continue with the concept plan, which we're going to go through. Um, and with that, we've been working on the numbers now. Um, unfortunately, it was a short week last week, and a lot of people are on vacation, including myself, since we met last. But we are taking each discipline and crunching the numbers and um, hopefully, once we get all those in, we'll put them in from each discipline, and it will be a nice number. And then also, we came um during the first week or maybe last week and did a window survey just to verify the findings of Port City and make sure, you know, what needs to be done with the windows is accurately documented. Overall, I mean, as you all know, as you, people work in the building, they're in good shape. Physically, you just can't operate them very well. That's where the, they've been past their lifespan. Um, and so that's it. We're going to continue and have that final number soon and um, any questions? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you for coming, dude. You want to go to public comment for anything that is not on the agenda? Well, if any member of the public would like to come to the council. You want? Okay. Moving on to public comment, we will go to unfinished business. First thing, unfinished business is the town hall project.
Um, so Mr. Kim, uh, what we did, we worked out, we consulted the actual timeline with the process to help guide us and value to go through if we wanted to get into the ballot by November. So there are certain things that have to get applied. These are the, that's the exact fact here. Again, we know nobody voted to say it's November, nobody's done any of that. We discussed it as a, you know, point of direction, I think, because of the possibility that everybody is coming in to vote anyway. So going through this, I sat down with Ken, want to make sure that you have that in front of you. You know exactly what we have to do between our manufacturing law. Again, nothing that says we'll not vote it or confirm to do anything or run this topic.
Excellent. Thank you for that. Um, looking forward to our next meeting, seven twenty three, obviously, this would be an agenda item. Um, we have worked towards addressing the comment that was at the meeting minutes and Stanhall brought up on what we were gonna be presenting to the public in November. Um, early on, I know there was conversation of we were gonna present to have the public vote whether we build new or we renovated. Um, the public hearing we had, the feedback we had from the public, it seemed overwhelming that everybody wanted to renovate. But we furthered that conversation on the twenty third, going now we're back here in Chambers and we'll be there, but that will keep us on this timeline in the answer to questions. Anybody on the council that need? Someone tell us.
I'll just, I'll just add for the August sixth uh, potential public hearing date, like I will be putting together a presentation similar to last June, I guess it was, when we got the stuff back from Port City to present to the public that will kind of cover the information we get back from um, Oak Point and Lassol, which is the cost estimates, the design, et cetera. And then also we'll be folding in kind of the new build aspect of it um, as a presentation at the meeting and then looking for input from folks after that on what their preference would be. Because Johnny, right, last year, it did seem like it was overwhelming renovate, um, but we have new information now. Or we will have new information, rather.
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else?
So just a, a note for the council, go Mallory.
Mm-hmm.
So on the proposed date, uh, we wrote down public hearing, you can change that to the workshop. Public hearing, I think we're gonna attend it, or Diane. And workshop set. So if you're gonna go to the meeting, we still would have time, I would have time, Diane, uh, the twenty third to the sixth of. It doesn't have to be a public hearing. It could be, you can call it a public workshop, whatever you want to call it.
Because this isn't a required public hearing necessarily. This is something that we want to do to get public input.
Correct.
Got it.
Well, I would call it a public workshop, a closer public hearing. Play on words, but it's just a workshop. You're looking for input with the public on the plan. The one of the twenty two to actually be an outside public hearing. So I think you could just call it a public workshop in the building. I think that's seven days, right, Diane?
It's seven days, um, but what I understand is workshops are not more public on it. They're just public counseling session.
Yeah, I feel like we did like a public meeting for something. We, we just called it a public meeting. But I mean, if we, if we call the meeting on the twenty third, that should give us enough time. We, if we make a motion to schedule a meeting on the twenty third, that should give us plenty of time for a public hearing regardless.
Yeah.
So if you didn't want to do the public hearing, unless you put for the sixth, um, if all that being, I think, had. You know, you're.
Okay. So that would be the first deadline on the twenty third after vote.
And where you, I said, so according to this schedule, there's two distinct times for that public will have the opportunity to be like a forum like this to kind of talk us back. I agree with you.
Right, so the second one on one ten twenty two will be a public hearing on a ballot language. That's anytime you have a question on a ballot, you have to have, you have to have a public hearing. Give a public meeting.
So, so I'm being public speaking. So on the sixth, potentially, if this, if this were, that would work out on August sixth, that would be a time where public could come and talk about their day health mission, that festival, there's a place and all that, right? But by the time we got to the twenty second of October, that's not what's being talked about. It's just the word that, like, just be potential. There are a hundred percent. Okay, so really, if, if people want to talk about their ideas that they had in share, that's one day to be the first public hearing, August second, thank you.
And nothing between August sixth, six, ten twenty two, nothing to reject holding more. You could hold as many as you want, you could have. The, the only thing is that after it will approve the language for the warrant, one twenty seven, the warrant, that couldn't change. So no matter what you have to be, nothing can change that.
So we have to lock in by September twenty, I mean, uh, August twenty seventh. So between the sixth and the twenty seventh, we have to finalize what we want. Basically, to have the language.
Right, right, so uh, Oak Point should be the twenty third presenting you with the actual budget. That's your night to discuss the budget, the projects, the project is, the conceptual design, we approved. Now, what they're gonna put the numbers to, hopefully that presents numbers. Then on twenty third, you'll have council discussion on what to do next. You wanna, you need more information. You wanna do something different, you know, like the numbers. I mean, if something that, hypothetically, thirty million, we can't do that. That's, we have to do something that's black and brown, right? So depending on what, that thirty million is just something I, it's no, no cost. So that would be, that's twenty third. If you got, you guys in the group, you'll put it all together and say, we like, we like what the product wants. We want to take it to the public, to the public. Now on the sixth, say, well, here's the design, here's what we came up with. This is a renovation of the town hall project. This would be the top. Like it, you're not, you're dreaming, you think it's good. We're taught, we just thought, whatever, we get the feedback. And I guess after that, the next meeting on the thirteen would be that we something, do nothing, or just, you know, move the warrant article. Ask me to get that formalized from an attorney, then do that with goal one, the eight seven. If I have to get it to a clerk, you know.
Any other? Good. Okay. People want to go for two, but I'm sending personal, you know, floodplain ordinance.
I'll make a motion to approve the updated floodplain management ordinance for the town of South Berwick for chapter seventy-seven. Floodplain management of the town code and charter, this is to be considered a mean emergency legislation to become effective immediately.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, if you have any comments on this. Hearing is seen, huh? We'll go to the roll, Valerie. Jeff, hi, Jessica.
Hi.
Listen.
Hi.
I vote on council, so she passes five to. Keep on to new business. New business number one, which is authorization of two police officers to enforce the prosecution as the municipal officers. Tim, would you like to brief us on this?
So there's a process where the state of Maine police officers right now. They're so much out, one of the, which they did, we ended up having a sweet legal process. If. The police department, police officer that trained took this course. Device they had to law to authorize them, they can go to court on the chapters. Of the town ordinances that are, they have to force, which is fire on the chat, side therapy. Back to playgrounds, always special movement, street sidewalks, the traffic. Back tickets, they give someone, they could give someone a summon for. Doing something illegal in the track, the dump, we give them five, you want to do whatever. Instead of us having a lawyer prosecute it, the person has money to please the county prosecutor. They can go stand and be their prosecutor to the county, but they can't do it unless you give them the authority, the council wants to do it, I think. So just be giving these two, they took the class, they passed. So it's something they wanted to do, put better in their cap and. Well, they can go and if we, you know, someone wants to challenge a back ticket or. If we give someone a violation, I wouldn't, they can prosecute it, so. It was just weird. All levels, just say there's a problem, have a higher lawyers. If lawyers involved, doing all that, make this.
Say it's possible, it's more money to send the lawyer when you get a ticket. Like most of the time. Right? Well, so how does that work? For these two officers. If I, if we hire lawyers, then lawyers not completing our our police. How is the justice of that work?
I I didn't, I speak any my.
How is the logistics of this work when you have two officers that are going to be reporting to court as lawyers? How does that?
No, one, no, one. So you get a pocket ticket, we give you a pocket ticket, and then at the same time, we go through a crack. Over the ball pocket, you give you a ticket to crack, then you take something illegal to the dump, have it in the superior, we dump it there, we give you a third, just a bad guy. So instead of a lawyer paying two hundred fifty dollars an hour. Phone call, reviewing the the ordinances, reviewing tickets, getting you a court date, you say I want a court date, if you want to go to trial. Whatever it is. One of these two police officers, probably the lieutenant Burris, then. Tim the officer, one of those two will take the case. Then they put together all the ordinances, send all the paperwork to the district attorney's office. And tell the district attorney they're representing the town instead of a lawyer. So the district attorney is going to pursue the case because it's it's still a police case that has to go in court, right? We're fine, just instead of us sending a lawyer, Lieutenant Stevens won't be in the office, I mean, he'll go to court, to court officer, so we already have. Lieutenant Stevens, Tim Neoff, are already a court officer, that's part of their job, they go to court cases for us and handle the court case. So instead of us sending a lawyer, they would just all be there, say, you know, for the judge, Jeff, this is the town ordinance, this is what Jeff and Ian did. This is what the office is stating, this is the case, that's that's it.
So I guess. I'm just uneducated in this because it's a good thing, I'm not a bad guy, I can probably guess, but. I don't understand, you said that they're going, they're the officers that go to the court anyway? So why are we even this?
Because they can only prosecute criminal cases while ordinances can be gathered.
Ah, oh, it's a.
They don't have your authority, they're the only ones who have the authority, but if they're you guys, if the municipal officials want to go handle. Listen, I know you'd like to, but.
Well, in all honesty, I'm just concerned that we're short-stopped, our police force. And now sending them to court to deal with ordinances, is there not anybody else in our administration that could need that can take this place, or we're just so short-stopped?
So the judge is one law officer, they're class, and this is very common in a lot of other cities and towns around the state of Maine.
You say a lot of our surrounding towns have, it's a great thing you show up to court, and they don't show up, it's going to give away. Well, maybe not that I've ever had that happen.
So.
What are we talking about? Like, how often do we expect these officers to be going to court for these issues?
Probably once every three, two to three years, maybe.
Oh, okay, all right.
We don't get many, they don't get many, most of it's stuff. So it's just, they do it in other categories. So once during the day, and so Lieutenant Stevens, we go, he works days all the time at the job. So that's why he usually goes with the court officer who are the detective side, which is Tim Neoff. That's part of his job, being detective, part of his job, the court officer. He usually, that's why he works Tuesday days, that would be with court, dead duty. So so we don't, we leave the man, I'll continue doing the court officer. So I, so I think this is all the stuff they do anyway, like if there was a criminal case, that's what Tim Neoff and. Black Steven does anyway, that's how it is. They prepare the case with district attorney and law.
Steve, it's better physical sense to have two, maybe do it instead of tying up the player.
Well, when you get, you know, this one, you know, so when we had, we just had a case. And, you know, that was, the lawyer said to me, can you guys handle this at your level, are you certified? No, no, I'm not, because now that. Cost us. And, you know, so and there was a lot of going back and forth, negotiating with the judge, trying to get this. One situation resolved and between the, there were some moving pieces, so. This became a little more costly than we should have, and with the process anything. We had this in place, so that's why they took the class down, put it down for safety.
This one, all, thank you for the clarification, that's if we're doing it, I, I, why are we changing? Off in my head, so I appreciate that.
Okay, Mary, in the future, I don't expect to get any more back tickets, so I'll throw a traction. No problem.
Do you have any more questions? All right, hearing done, I move to authorize Officer Neoff and Lieutenant Stevens to represent the town self-serve prosecuting municipal ordinance violations. The district board for the specific ordinance is staying in the company. Thank you. The motion in a second. Comments, hearing done, we'll go to roll, Jeff? Hi, Valerie?
Hi.
Listen?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Oh, I also, we'll pass this five zero. Moving on to new business two, I would like to make a motion to table this until the seven twenty-three, eight. So we don't have time to. Click a contract and have a discussion and a better session prior to that meeting.
Yeah.
Agenda items, amendment to the agreement to break Pierce on the town revitalization.
Second.
A motion in a second, do I have any comments?
I just want to. Concerning about the executive session, making sure that we're within. Around what state law says, that that will not entirely clear. I just want to make sure, I'm off for the table, and it's the executive session that I'm concerned about, I don't want to be dancing. In a place that I think I'm dancing in, so I think my money gets to clarity on that, maybe, but off of the table.
We have a little bit of clarity, but I'll let it stand until we find out more, if we want to just put that on and then talk more specifically.
But I'm losing care, Sir Haley, it's a negative.
Even more conversation.
Chair would like me to verify that along with.
Yes, sir, please, sir. We can buy a life very easy.
I will.
Thank you. All right, hearing no more conversation on that, we'll go to some votes, table lift, Valerie?
Hi.
Jessica?
Hi.
Jeff? Hi, listen?
Hi.
Well, I also. We'll table it until seven twenty-three, we'll pass this five zero, prior to going to the town managers' report and comment. Jessica, could you please rise?
I'm so sorry, I'm not here, I'm not there.
Thank you.
I I have the honor though, since Mallory's not here.
Thanks, Don.
Send you an award of appreciation, presented to town councilor Jessica here. For your dedicated service to the town self-or serving as town council, working on the park against the plan committee. Chair of downtown revitalization plan advisory committee. Part work didn't go unnoticed, thank you. I also want to mention, you can't really help you both in the town, you can open the holiday, drive the festival. Four H. Everything you've done, baseball, it has been critical asset to the town, so you're going to. Having that.
Thank you, Eric.
You may have the badge. Moving on to town manager's call.
On the town editor's report. Up the highway about Cooper Sand and Dave. Police of Pinworth portion, January storm. Our portion, we still have to do forty to fifty feet of that rail to replace. We hope to do that this week or next. Cruise will start into the original road payment, repair now while road for down and open. There's five net two arrests, two accidents, one injury traffic softs. Strawberry vessel, as far as police detail, airport's probably the best they've had, no incidents and everything went smoothly. Lieutenant Stevens, because it is CSI camp, will be growing caffeine again. Went very well, it's good, three days of training scenario. And they've asked to come back in the fall and prove no progress. Flyer company had eleven hauls in the last two weeks, two hundred and thirty-seven dollars year to date. On Friday, two twenty-eight, fly by the system, we were on to fly partner. With capside sailboat on Sam and Paul's river, cruise deployed the new boat. Found your free boat one, it made its way to the vessel, crossing on the Grand Avenue, got it from shore. Then Charlie Cameron, fly by the big tower, surrounded with all gentlemen from water. Who was wearing a life jacket, was uninjured, that's bringing in the shore for evaluation by EMS. Fly by the total small sailboat, short, they're proceeding, so good job today. So enforcement, five building permits, six plumbing permits, twenty-two inspection, one violation. And CBO suspension school gym will be coming down any day in fact, decided today to. To be back. On the planning, major home occupation automobile services. Public care in the sidewalk will be set to July seventeen. Major site plan amendment, San Diego states, public care set to July seventeen for that. Unit dollar toll and zoning permit will be on the application, July seventeen. There will also be on July seventeen, site plan amendment to CBO suspension school gym. And historic district commission, doing workshop of town council planning board. And historic commission on July twenty-four. Mission is no longer, when the mission no longer has twelve, they only have two members, so all did be with.
Library, chief members, two thousand eight hundred and ninety items were checked out. Fifty-four items were sent out in a food and seven for broad and surrounding libraries. Twenty-six programs took place with four hundred and seventy-five attendees. And summer reading program has two hundred and thirty-seven people signed up for that. Little buddy daycare helped an event at the library that drew in fifty-five people. Many of the attendees had not been to the library before, too, they did issue credit cards out that way. Recreation, the Strabber area ran down very well, registrations were up quite a bit this year, which is really great to see. They received sixty registrations in the last twenty-four hours, so that was a little bit, you know, hard for their planning purposes. But they got through everything and it went very smoothly. Summer camp is off to a great start, they have great staff, great wonderful kids. They have ventured to the island of Shoals, they explored star islands. The fire department did a super surf one afternoon, could have loved that, they always do. Last week, they visited Ellicoyne State Park for a day at the lake. This week, they head to the Boston museum of science. And they also have a cool instructor who will be joining them, cool with sessions on Thursday morning. The seniors over the past two weeks enjoyed a Fourth of July luncheon and cruised on Spirit of Boston. This week, they had a movie magazine lunch. I think sale and review is underway, they are looking at sales that have occurred since July one, twenty twenty-two. Up until now, this entails a field review, reviewing of the deed, listings, sales questionnaires that have been returned to the existing office. And then the tables and the values will be updated as of April first, twenty twenty-four, the first eight required. By the part of the reevaluating the town, CRT is currently working at the Old Hill neighborhood in surrounding areas. In the town clerk's office, we have a new customer service representative that started on July first, her name's Patricia Morris. She's sweetheart, we all love her. The state has new plates coming out, it's going to be a tree design star. Or you can get a plain design, that will be replacing the chain plates starting on May first, twenty twenty-five. If you did want to keep your registration number, HP plate, there's a fee that you can reserve that number for you for next year. And I am point A and A Q page of the town clerk's website. About that, all right. And ongoing absentee ballots for persons that are sixty-five years and older, there will be a applicable form on the town clerk's webpage under forms and applications. Citizens will be able to split application to the town clerk that will put them on an automatic mailing list for ballots. This service will be in effect until an address changed for that person who has been asked that. The chief's first station, public works has hollowed away the brush in the chip pile. Three on with empty past Monday, and the crews are working on mailer repair, dealer repairs in Canada. I cannot development, we had a committee meeting last night. There was lots of discussion around underground wirey, the need to set up branding for the town, wayfinding, and a way for the town to stand out. And the next meeting on that will be Monday on December, that's the fun here in that tour. My area, I had business meeting and town staff meeting for a notification that we. Retirement home savings account, good news for that, letters were sent out to the staff last week. All the account, the account is back up and running again, all the participants are now able to get reimbursed for the medical allowance as they were. EDP is evident, staff is adjusting to the change in guidance. At the year end, you'll be working continually on balancing accounts, verifying data. The invoices for the two years will start needing two warrants on coming next council meeting for April twenty-four and twenty-five, that'll happen probably until mid-August. And nothing is finalized until we have the audit, which is going to go for August to twenty-third to twenty-fifth. Thank you for the verification, they get back to me after I send them a letter and the letter from the school. They will be doing another light signal light analysis in September, that school turns back up to see if there's more traffic like that. With additional pedestrian traffic, they make it smaller, grass change, due to the hunt for cancer. So that's it. Our finance office and all this, we lost our E C yesterday morning. So that was a bit of a challenge, we had all plans going on. So the gentleman did, I was glad, actually, I was here last night late because he got here about quarter past seven and he finished up just before eight. So we got him back. He did say that the unit was very tired, it's twenty years old. He put in one. Uh, he put in one part, and then still needed to put in another part to boost the pressure, so that it would start, that it stops when we turned on. And it can't do it on its own. Of program. And, and making corrections, um, on the absentee ballot, um. It wasn't mentioned that right now, like, there's sixty-five, um, they state this will be too below, the ongoing absentee process for everybody starting this year. And, and right now, but right now, it's just the sixty-five.
So, on my, this administration department, town manager, I had five business fees, many staff meetings. Uh, Hoover Sandra Room, Senate Command, around four hundred and fifty thousand, the whole unit. So that's right. Um, but again, a good part of that is, I wanna thank Jen and Jay for working on that. Yeah. Doing the theme paper, law paperwork, a lot of hours, putting every penny, every number in. FEMA's gonna reimburse the seventy-five percent, FEMA will do fifteen percent, and we'll only have to pay ten percent. You know, if you weren't filing the faith board and doing that, that'd be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars hit with tax papers. And what you, what I passed out to, what I got from Pat Robinson, from the town bar subject, if you remember, we gave them twenty-five hundred dollars for a brick retailer and so forth, and they wanted to make sure that the towns have got pictures of what they did and worked, so they could assume exactly what they did for the money. So kudos to them. Um. Civic by Rosas Foundation is having the annual cycle ride, ride to life on Saturday. July thirteenth, will be two hundred participants riding down in the lobby block, Tom Road, they just, they got a certain path, they stand inside of the roads. Uh, they coordinate the police department to get, just keep checking on, make sure they're okay. Then National Multiple Sporos Society is having a Daniel bike. And that's a great main getaway on Saturday, August third, Sunday, I haven't scored. And approximately two hundred participants will be riding to town that day. Uh, on August thirteenth, the meeting on August thirteenth, we have to set the faculty, what I'll be, sets the meeting, and then the set. The last meeting, I told you about the tip, but the tip gets audited every year. Um, Jen told me that I was wrong. No uncertain terms, and so I said, huh. So I went back and called the attorney, and fair enough, they changed that law in two thousand nineteen, the state doesn't audit them anymore, because they don't have the staff to quit, so. Yeah, that's why I knew they did it. Well, I gave some incorrect information, so Jen will write out a rock, back it on the calendar.
Oh, I did?
Definitely. Um, and the good, good news is they started the survey, we're on Main Street today. They were shooting our side of the street from Norton Street, right, far at Norton Street, a lot of shit. They're in the intersection, dogging cars, and set up the tripod, so and then I saw him down in Dowling Main later on in the afternoon, so there, they decided. That's the news. Why it's been so, and that's, that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Before we get to council member comments, um, I was handed a letter that was sent to the town council from Comcast, and I just wanna know a couple things, but the update from Comcast, but we do have one provider in town, that the only ones that ever did, that I know of, if you do it, because they're willing to do it, they're fit. So with that being said, uh, they sent us a letter, dear members of the council, uh, we're committed to keeping you and our customers informed about changes to expedite TV services. Fortunately, please note the following price increase, you're implementing on August one. So your outside TV features are gonna go from a dollar ninety-nine month to four ninety-nine month. Day is gonna increase from eleven ninety-nine to thirteen ninety-nine. And Warner Brothers, it's gonna go from fifty ninety-nine to sixteen ninety-nine. Um, again, I know we get a lot of complaints from citizens on their internet bills. I think Comcast too, but they're the only provider we have, the only ones that did, so. Just be aware, unfortunately, this time, your rates will be going up. Now, without any bad news, moving on to council member comments. Valerie, what do you have? It says, Ray, go with you first.
What? What'd you say?
They said, Ray, go with you first.
Oh, thank you. Um, I'll be back with bells on for the next meeting, and Jessica, I'm just really sad I'm not there, and I wish you the best of luck, and we will miss you so much. That's all I have.
Yep.
I just, for my clarity, uh, the next meeting for our town council, the twenty-third, and then we have a workshop on the second, and I feel like, yeah, okay, and then, nothing else?
No, okay, no, those two days, that's all, right now, right now, that's it.
Alright, perfect, uh, dude, dude, uh, and, uh, good luck, Jen. Yep. That's all.
Also.
Um, babe, good luck, wish you the best, Jess. Um, softly, because I tell you all the time that I'm not there, you're leaving, I will say, don't look forward, it gives the backside of the way, I would just have to fight the weird.
So I will save the last, the best for last, I will go next. Uh, I've enjoyed the last three years of you, I've learned a bunch, uh, it's an interesting, to say the least. And I am incredibly impressed with your work ethic and how you brought everything together. How it's all it did, and everything you did for the community, so again, thank you for everything you do. To you, Ben.
Thank you very much for, um, allowing me to serve, um, the South Park community, it's been an absolute pleasure to, um, hold this position, and I feel very honored to have contributed to the community. You know, I sat next to the South Park reporter at the strawberry festival, and to hear that there are less than three hundred subscribers to their weekly newsletter, to know that there's about eleven hundred followers to the town of South Berwick's age, to people who are not paying attention, I just want to, uh, express that there are such people doing this work. And as we are headed into a local climate, which may be very stressful and, you know, emotion are in playing throughout the fall season, um, to understand that the people that are doing this work, in and they out, have really, uh, huge, um, values in the community, they hold it together, they're doing the good work for this fall. And, um, the people that are subscribing to the South Park reporter and following along to our own media health, we really appreciate your, um, eyes on South Berwick, and to the people who are doing the part, and to the folks who are up here in administration, thank you. Motion to adjourn.
Second. Everybody all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody voted up. Thank you all, everyone.
Hi, everyone. Thanks, John.
Hi, Valerie.
Hi. Thanks.